Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 Town Council Meeting of the Town of Florence. Item number one, Ian, would you mind calling roll call?
Mayor Eaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adam.
Here.
Members of the council, Neil. Councilmember Butchellato is absent tonight. Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Bencina.
Here.
Councilmember Bedford.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, tonight's moment of silence, just think about someone that's needing a little help right now and maybe needing a prayer, so, and then follow the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item number five is our Call to the Public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the Town Council. Council rules limit public comments to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask a matter put on the future agenda. However, members of the council should not discuss or act on any matter during open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion or legal action. Is there anyone here in the House for a call to the public or online? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close first call to the public. If you change your mind, we've got another one coming up. Item number six, we're going to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One Special Meeting. We'll do a silent roll call. New business is business C. Discussion and possible approval, January 21st and April 15th, 2025 Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One Special Meeting Minutes. Does any council members have any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, excuse me, the minutes of January 21st and April 15th, 2025 Merrill Ranch CFD District Number One.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passed. Item C2, Public Hearing on Feasibility Report for Projects, Construction of Which Will Be Financed as Proceeds for Sale of General Obligation Bonds for and Possible Adoption for Resolution Number MRCFD-1153-25. Mr. Carl.
Good evening, Board Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we have Mark Reader from Stiefel here to present this item. Mark's the financial advisor for the CFD, and I believe he's been with us about 20 years. And also in the audience, we have Paul Gales, and he is our Bond Counsel. So if you have any more, any questions, they're both here. And I'll turn it over to Mark.
Did you want to pull that?
You bet.
Let me pull up real quick one. Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Not good?
Oh, good. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Nice to see you again. As you recall, we met a few months ago, as you were taking office with a study session, which I trust you found helpful, and it's very nice to see you again. Thank you for having me. Just want to talk about a few things as it relates to our CFD. Some of you have been through this process before, and some of this will be maybe your first time, so I'll kind of walk you through the statutory process we have to go through. As you know, the town about 20 years ago entered into a development agreement with Polte with regard to the CFDs. And in connection with that development agreement, the town had agreed to establish a secondary property tax at $3.25 for your bond debt service and 30 cents for maintenance and operation, as you recall, along with the ability to issue special assessment bonds. So that was kind of the general framework moving forward the next 20, 30 years. It's been over 20 years now, believe it or not. And so, the model is that Polte has been a great home builder for your community, and they have invested hundreds of millions of dollars, as you know, in Merrill Ranch. And we issue bonds after Polte has spent the money, has made the investment, and as growth has occurred and as your tax base has expanded. And each year, as the tax base expands, there's the potential of having some bonding capacity to sell and to buy certain public infrastructure from the developer, or essentially to reimburse them for it. So that's kind of the general framework that goes back way over 20 years ago. So when we come to our CFD Board of Directors like we are this morning, we do two things. The statute requires us to hold a public hearing and to approve a feasibility report. So in your board packets, and what I'm going to share with you here in a moment, is the statutory feasibility report that we've used over the years. And it, under the statute, is required to lay out, and I'm going to kind of go through here real quick for you, lay out the plan. Here it is right here. Sorry, I lost it there for a second. And so I'm going to walk you through this very quickly. We're going to then ask if there's any public comment. We're going to close the public hearing. Then I'm going to walk you through another presentation that gives you a little more detail on the bond transaction. So first of all, I'm going to walk you through the feasibility report. Okay, so pursuant to the statute, we have to provide an introduction and the purpose of the feasibility report. We have to describe the public infrastructure that's going to be acquired, as I mentioned to you. We have to show some maps of the area to be benefited. We have to show you a timetable for the completion of the public infrastructure and the plan of finance. So, the reason this thing is hard done. So I'm going to walk you through this here. So here we go on the introduction, and you're familiar with a lot of this. This is a lot of the authorization we received way back when, in 2005. This talks a little bit about a general description of District Number One in this case. As you know, we have District Two, we have District Number One. And we list, here's a nice one that we think you'll appreciate. Here's District One here, here's District Two. We're showing both districts here just to show you the magnitude of the progress, the magnitude of the development progress out there, as you know. And so if I go down here, Polte gave this to us, and you can see the total closings per year. And as you know, the real estate is very cyclical, very economically oriented, as you know, so you can see all the good years and the bad years and the medium years that developers go through. But you can see down here, there's about 2,500 completed residential homes in District Number One. No surprise to you, as you drive out there, it's a beautiful, it's a wonderful community, so very good progress with a lot more development coming, as you know. And then over here, you can see in District Number Two, about 1,600, that's largely built out. So between District One and District Two, just to give you a framework of the progress, about 4,100 residential homes out there built over the last 20 years. Okay, so just wanted to kind of give you a little reminder of that, and we put that in our required statutory feasibility report. The statute requires us to describe the public infrastructure to be reimbursed to the developer or acquired by the district, and you'll, these are probably some familiar names to you. Polte gave us these, and it's Constitution, National Way, Sun City Boulevard, National Way Phase Two, Sun City Boulevard Phase Two. So when we issue these bonds in the next few weeks, there'll be about, all around, if you don't mind, about $3.6 million of public infrastructure that will be reimbursed to Polte. So that's a little bit of background on the development progress, a little bit about what projects have been completed and will be reimbursed out of the bond money. I won't, I won't get into all the details here, but they provided some very, very good details on the public infrastructure. Our maps, of course, is required, and so that's what that is in Section Three. And then the timing of the infrastructure, it's already built, it's been built, and as you know, we haven't been able to issue bonds out there for a significant period of time for various reasons, so it's been built and constructed. And then the last section really here is the plan of finance, which I'm going to walk you through here in the next PowerPoint presentation, but we will be issuing, with your approval this evening, over the next few weeks, general obligation bonds, of which the tax base, the people that live within District Number One will repay the bonds back at a designated tax rate that I'm going to walk you through. And so that pretty much concludes a brief summary of the feasibility report. I hope you found that helpful, and I'm glad to answer any questions of the board or of the community. We'll close the public hearing, and then I'll share some more details with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And yes, the report's very detailed. So at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the board on the public hearing, online or in Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Okay. We made this one a little nicer for you. The other one was required by the statute, so we put a little color on here. So I'm going to walk you through, some of this will be a little bit of a repeat. We have our nice map here, and we have our District Two over here, about 1,100 acres, and then most of our development in District One's right here west of Felix, I think, as you all know. This is where all of the, this is where all the tax base is, right in here, okay? Very, very defined boundaries. Our new growth, as you know, will be east of Felix. We're working on that, as you know. We're working on the various technical provisions of future development as the development starts to go essentially east and throughout the very large boundary of District Number One here. So I know you're familiar with this. Couple pictures, very nice pictures of the Polte project. Jeff Luke with Polte is here, by the way, if you have any questions for Jeff and Polte. They've been a very good partner and have really built a nice product out there, as you know. So those are some nice pictures we got. Okay, so District Number One, as I mentioned, we're going to be issuing general obligation bonds. There's only about a million five outstanding, I'm going to walk you through that in a moment. We have been precluded from issuing bonds for many, many years. As far as the tax rate is concerned, we know this is a very important topic, a very sensitive topic anytime we talk property taxes. The property tax rate out there, as you know, has dropped significantly over the years because we haven't been able to issue the bonds. The public policy goal is to set it at 3.25 each year and the 30 cents for the MNO. Because of the situation out there, and we haven't been able to issue bonds, the tax rate has been significantly lower than that. So call that a nice payment holiday for many, many years. I'm going to walk you through this. Here's our public policy at 3.25, and we're going to try to stair-step this, is the term we all kind of came up with. I mean, I think we were as low as 40 cents a year ago in anticipation of a bond issue in fiscal year 2425. We set it at, I think it's a $1.40, $1.5, my apologies. And so next year, budget year 2526, the thought is to stair-step this, to manage it, okay, up to 2.25. So 1.50, 2.25, and then depending upon what happens over the next year or so, we're going to stair-step it up to 3.25. I'll walk you through that in a moment. Okay, so that's kind of our tax rate management kind of thought processes. We've been working together the last couple months on this. All righty, good. 30 cents is good maintenance and operation money. We need that for maintenance, as you know, so that's good. Okay, sorry for the numbers here. I know you're going into budget season. I'll make this really easy for you. We have our fiscal year, so 2425, right? We're wrapping that up real soon. The current assessed evaluation tax base that the county sets for purposes of levying property taxes for the current year is 48.6 million. It was up 9%. That was a nice number because of the growth. All right, so here's our debt service that we had outstanding, and you can see here, we set the tax rate at $1.50. Okay, now we're heading towards budget year 2526. That's what this, this will impact budget year 2526, this issuance. The good news is, from the county, CFD Number One grew at 15%. That's the latest estimate we got. Good news. Good economic development, nice residential closings. As you know, the county, the county numbers are 15 months behind, but you had a very, very good year, maybe one of your best years yet in terms of your tax base growth. And so this is your outstanding debt, that's the million five. The thought is, with regard to this resolution, under consideration this evening, that we would issue somewhere around 4 million, give or take, and we're going to amortize it here. As you can see, it's a relatively short amortization, and as mentioned to you, we're going to establish for budget year 2526 that 2.25, okay? We assumed you'd grow at 7%, somewhere around 5% to 7%, and with that, we would likely come back in about a year for a second sale for Polte reimbursement of about 3.4 million, and then we would start to stair-step our tax rate at $3 to 3.25 and go no higher than the 3.25 pursuant to the development agreement. Okay? So I just wanted to give you kind of a framework for what our current debt is, a million five, our current bond issue, somewhere around 4 million, how we're going to stair-step our tax rate or manage our tax rate, and then probably next year or in '26, come back and what may be the final issue in terms of bonds for reimbursement, depending upon what we do with the new growth area that, as you know, we're all working hard on. Okay. So I'll go through this, and then I'll answer any questions from the, from the CFD Board of Directors. I hope that was helpful for you. Thank you, Mayor. You know, our staff just did a nice pie chart. This is the public infrastructure we talked about in the feasibility report. Very nice boulevards there, as you guys, as we come into the development. This is the property, property tax base called net limited assessed value. This is what I just shared with you. We just put it into a graphical format for you, and we're all hoping this will continue to be the case as homes are sold, closed, and put on the tax rolls. So this is our little calendar with your approval tonight. Like I mentioned to you, we're going to be selling bonds in the next 10 days to two weeks and have the bond issue closed by the end of June. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the CFD Board of Directors, I hope that was helpful, and myself and Paul Gales are here to answer any questions the board might have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll open it up to council members for any questions. Councilmember Bencina.
I had a meeting with Carl yesterday, so most of my stuff has been answered, though. CFD One, the payoff on all these bonds will be what year?
On CFD One, right here, at the moment, this could change, at the moment, we're trying to get all this retired by 2030.
And then this tax goes away for the residents?
Yeah, then if this new development that we're working on, that you're reasonably, that you're familiar with, yeah, this would go away, and then we would create potentially new boundaries, and this would go away.
Yeah. I've talked to some residents, and when we went, when they went from 84 cents to a buck 50, they were screaming, but I said, I'm paying $3.25, so they accepted it, and if they hear that it's all gone in 2030, hopefully 2031, it's, it's an excitement to them, so I think it's a good year to do this.
Anyone else in council have any questions? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the adoption of Resolution Number MRCFD-1153-25 as written.
We have a motion?
My second.
We have a motion and a second, any other questions? Hearing done? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. At this time, we will adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District and move on to public hearing presentations, item number eight.
Chair, we do need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn from CFD One.
A second. Motion and a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, Ian. I had made public hearing for a conditional use permit for a new school building for Desert Rock Church. Discussion, approval, disapproval, adopt Resolution 1933-25. Marcella.
Tonight, we have a conditional use permit for the Desert Rock Church. This is out there on the west side of Franklin at the intersection of Hunt Highway and Franklin. The Desert Rock Church is located at 9230 West Franklin Road. They currently have a church facility as well as a preschool daycare. The site is zoned R1R, and it's a hard zoning, so it is not part of the Anthem at Merrill Ranch PUD. It is its own zoning. And the CUP's proposed is for a new private Christian school, and the school will operate Monday through Friday, and they're looking at approximately 75 kids or less to start going into this venture. And just to show that this is part of the development code, we have the table section that shows a C for conditional use permit for public or private schools within the R1R district. Now, when considering conditional use permit, the Town Council should, or discuss or think about the following, you know, is the site of proposed use, what is the surrounding land uses, what's there now, and what kind of access is there to the site, and what kind of impact will it have on the surrounding properties? In this case, it's just to approve the use of a private school on the site. This isn't a full design review, we're not looking at elevations, we're not looking at building heights and how it looks. This is just for the use of the private school. The site does have one point of vehicular access that they utilize to Franklin Road, and this will serve both visitors and employees, and it is paved. The church was kind enough to pave it themselves. And the surrounding land uses, you have single residential ranchette to the north and east, and those are both vacant. And then to the south and to the west, you also have some PUDs. They're different, but at this time, there's nothing being built on those PUDs. And of course, onsite, it is single residential ranchette. Public outreach has been to the code and state, so we did public hearings for the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was a neighborhood meeting for this conditional use permit on April 10th at 6:00 PM, and that was at the community center. We did have a couple residents come and ask questions about how many kids were going to be there, how are they going to operate, how long did they see this expanding, and if they were going to, where would that be, questions such as that. A letter was also sent to property owners within at least 300 feet per the state statute. And at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, no members of the public spoke at the public hearing. And ad, ad, has advertised onsite, and in the letters, we have the schedule for the neighborhood meeting, the planning and zoning public hearings, and Town Council. As a recommendation, staff found that this conditional use permit met what was put in our development code, and we also included a list of conditions that's also found within that code, and it fits with the character of the area, and it has a overall low-intensity land use. The Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded a recommendation of approval with the conditions, and those are listed in the resolution and the RCA. The questions that they did ask during the Planning and Zoning Commission, some of them did have, did ask about traffic, whether that site would be able to handle it, and the church did provide a example within their packet of showing how cars would move through the site. They, a representative also spoke that with the amount of people and that they've staggered times, so it's not all at the same time as the schools that are at the mouth of Franklin and Hunt Highway. So a lot of that traffic will not severely impact what's already there. With that, the representative, Pastor Joey Bilbury, is here if you have any questions for him, and we do ask that a public hearing be opened for this as well.
Thank you, Marcella. This time, open the public hearing for anyone in the House or online that would like to Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any questions from council?
I'd just like to make a comment and compliment the planning department and Planner Benitez, because I was there. I really appreciate that you're giving us the draft of the meeting minutes because the time is short, and we didn't have time to get them approved through P and Z, but it's very helpful, and I thought you really explained the one issue that I have, and I think the chair raised, about Franklin Road, the one access in and out, and because it's a school, and we all understand that parents are likely to be driving their kids, so it's not a bus-type situation, and I think we're all very comfortable that they have enough property to circulate the cars, should that ever become a bigger issue, so, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Councilmember Bencina.
Just a quick question. Are you going to offer daycare also, early drop-off? Just a quick...
And we already have a daycare onsite.
Oh, you do?
Yes, we have a preschool daycare already operating.
Okay. How many students do you have?
75 in, in the daycare preschool.
And then what's this going to grow you to, this new portion?
This will be an additional 50.
50, okay. And it's probably not for him, but I looked at the ALA Franklin up to your property, and I could see where the road is a little smaller going back to your church, right?
Yes, so we paved a two-lane road, and without curb and gutter, that's why it looks a little, it's not as wide as the curb and gutter road that they had to put in from Hunt Highway.
Okay. Isn't there another subdivision going behind Meritage that will come out? Will their exit be out onto Franklin?
Yes, so eventually, whoever purchases the land and develops it will build that other side of the road.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bencina. Anyone else? Councilmember Neal.
Just from personal experience, it's, it's out kind of by itself. There's, there's no traffic impact. There will be no problems with traffic during school, during the day. My wife is actually a teacher there, attends church there. There's the room for the building, everything it needs is there, not to mention, we don't want to go against God, because he's going to make the final decision anyway, but we're not going against God, so we're going to agree with what God's saying. I can guarantee you that the Spirit of God will pass to Joy there. I can guarantee you that the spirit of God will pass to Joey there, and I think this is all steam ahead. It's, it's something for children that we all horribly need. It is God, it is God, thank you Jesus, amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Neal. Anyone else? Alright, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I guess we're making a motion to approve res, adopted resolution number nineteen thirty-three dash twenty-five. A permit for a private, conditional use permit for a private school at Desert Rock Church at ninety-two thirty West Franklin Road, Florence, Arizona, with stipulations APN two hundred dash twenty-four dash oh four eight A, PZ dash twenty-five dash twenty-nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, motion passed. Item B, public hearing on ordinance number one fifty-nine dash twenty-five, discussion approval and disapproval on ordinance of the town of Florence. Uh, ordinance one fifty-nine dash twenty-five, Andrew.
Thank you, Chris. Sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I am presenting on a amendment to the town of Florence's development code regarding the radius of notification for applicable projects that have public hearings. So just a brief background, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission made this request that we look into increasing the radius for public hearings. And so staff researched several cities and towns, uh, the list here below. I have seven cities and towns from the, from the valley, east and west. All are maybe a little on the larger side, but they've all experienced a good amount of development over the past, you know, several decades. So that was kind of the purpose of choosing these sevens, looking for some that have experienced a lot of growth. So we're just gonna go through, and I will show you what every single one of these cities does for their radius of notification, and then we have our recommendation, and then, um, some of the code language itself. So starting off with city of Phoenix, they have, uh, any property owners within six hundred feet of the site are notified. So those are individual notifications to those within six hundred feet. And then, um, they also specify the nearest resident within the four quadrants, so specifying those immediately adjacent to the property are notified. And then the neighborhood associations registered with the city within a one-mile radius. And you'll see that the one mile is definitely the pariah of the group, that's pretty far compared to what some of the other cities do. For example, the city of Chandler, we have the six hundred feet as well, but then the neighborhood organizations within a quarter mile, and that's a little more standard. City of Avondale does a thousand feet for individuals and homeowners associations. And then city of Mesa does just the property owners located within five hundred feet. City of Tempe is the same as city of Chandler's, six hundred feet to all individual owners, and then a quarter mile from the homeowners associations. Town of Gilbert is three hundred feet from property owners, and then a thousand feet for the HOAs. And they also have that provision in there that there may be some other requirement that increases the radius for a specific project. And then lastly, we come to city of Buckeye, and I put this last intentionally, because our recommendation borrows a good bit from this one. So it's three hundred feet normally for projects under, under twenty acres, but then when you get above twenty acres, the radius goes up to five hundred feet. So the three hundred is the requirement of the state law, which is why you see that, and that is currently what this, what the town of Florence has. But then our recommendation for increasing it, we wanted to keep the three hundred feet for smaller projects on parcels under twenty acres, but then for parcels on twenty acres or more, we want to increase the radius of notification to six hundred feet, so just straight doubling it. And then for any project, regardless of acreage, so small or large, we want to be notifying the neighborhood associations within the quarter mile. So there's kind of four important numbers there, and I have them highlighted on the slide for ease of understanding. And then we also have some visuals. So this would be a smaller project, this, uh, this parcel is actually where our office is located. It's about a half-acre parcel, so way under the twenty, and you see the three hundred foot buffer. And in case you're wondering why it's not a perfect circle, it's measured exactly from every point along that rectangle, so you kind of get that rectangular ellipse shape there. So all of those property owners would be getting a personal notice. Then we have the larger buffer, the six hundred foot, for a parcel greater than twenty acres. This parcel that you're seeing here is actually about forty acres. So just to get you an idea, every single owner within that radius would be getting notice, as opposed to what it currently is at three hundred. Then we come to the HOA piece, and this is, we're back to the small piece of property. Any HOAs within that boundary, within that blue circle, would be receiving notice. Not necessarily individual property owners within that boundary, it's just the registered organizations, and we do have a contact list with the town that we would be using for that. And then looking back at our large parcel, again, not every single person within that radius is getting noticed, but the HOAs, any HOAs that it touches at all, so you can see Bisbee Ranch is well within it, and then it kind of just goes up to Western Crossing there, and any others that may be in that mix as well. So that is the recommendation, and then we have here what we actually need to amend in our code. The four sections, conditional use permits, temporary use permits, citizen review process, and applications and fees. So conditional use permits has two sections that we need to change. Again, just adding the language in, uh, there's no, nothing is striked out here, just adding in. And including that, um, that bit that we saw from the city of Phoenix to include those immediately adjacent to the property, they would be within the three hundred feet, but to have that in just for extra clarity sake, to make sure that the neighbors get notified, the adjacent neighbors. So temporary use permits, pretty similar, uh, just making the language work. Citizen review process, so this was actually, this is all added, again, you can see there's no strike-throughs here. You see, um, one fifty point zero two two and one fifty point zero one five, you can see they reference each other, and it's all about hearings and citizen review process, but nowhere in either of those sections was the three hundred feet ever actually mentioned. So I wanted to include it in at least one, so that it's there for clarity sake. And then applications and fees has, just, it's part of a list of everything that you need to be submitting, and so the ownership list is part of an application, and so we want to make sure that we're informing our applicants that this is the new requirements for the ownership list. And then a bit of clarification, this was something that came up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, and we did have two meetings at P and Z for this, one was a workshop, and then the other was the public hearing. And they forwarded the recommendation, of course. So we are notifying neighborhood organizations, they are not required to notify residents. They're strongly encouraged to do so when they get the notice, that however they see best fit. Posting it in some bulletin board or on an email list, whatever they want to do, or they can choose not to. Responsibility still falls on the applicant to notify all within the specified radii. So just a bit of clarification there. And then you might be wondering why something like a variance is not included in this, because of course they do public hearings as well. Well, variances are heard by the Board of Adjustment, which is served by the town council, and the intent of the variance ordinance is to really notify those that are impacted immediately by the variance, and we didn't feel it was necessary to increase that radius. So that concludes the presentation, so, and we do need to have a public hearing for this, and then we can entertain questions, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing for ordinance number one fifty-nine dash twenty-two. If anyone is in the audience or online that would like to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll now close the public hearing. At this time, is there any questions or discussion from council? Councilmember Bencina.
I don't have a question, I just want to say it was an excellent presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, yes, and thank you, uh, to the, to the commission also, for putting the time in on that as well. Alright, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance of the town of Florence, amending Florence town code title fifteen. Land usage section one five oh dot oh one six, conditional use permits, section one five oh dash oh one seven, temporary use permits, section one five oh dot oh two two, citizen review process, and section one five oh dot oh two three, applications and fees as designated in Exhibit A and attached.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, thank you. Item nine, consent agenda, all items on a consent agenda will be handled by a single vote. That's part of the consent agenda unless a council member objects to time an agenda item as called. We have, I, consent items A through C, does anyone want to have anything pulled? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, it's written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, item ten, new business, discussion approval, disapproval of contract with United Rentals for Mount not to exceed two hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, the RCA's are super clear on these, uh, so we have do, we do have Mr. Wayne Scott, does anyone have any questions for him tonight? I guess we don't have any questions for you, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve the contract with United Rentals in the amount not to exceed two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, one hundred, uh, one hundred twenty-two and eighty-four cents for the repair of the emergency backup generator to the south wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All of, all opposed? Thank you, item B, discussion approval, disapproval, Amoresco change order number four to modify the blower motors, the inverted duty, uh, inverter duty at South Wastewater Plant, not to exceed one hundred thirty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven. Again, RCA very clear, is there any questions for Mr. Wayne Scott?
He wants a question.
Alright, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approve Amoresco change order number four to modify the blower motors to inverter duty at the south wastewater treatment plant, and a cost not to exceed one hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, alright, Tim, I almost feel like we've left you out.
That's alright. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tim.
I just want to say, Tim, though, thank you for nineteen years of doing this job, appreciate you.
Item ten C, approval or discussion approval, disapproval to enter into cooperative use contract with Affinity Material Solutions to complete the Memorial Park roads and enhancement at Heritage Park walking path system, not to exceed sixty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Uh, again, RCA very clear, Paul, this is, I'm very happy to see this with Memorial Park and the roads, so does anyone have any questions for Mr. King? Councilmember Bencina.
I do, the walking path is at Heritage, is that the one that goes around?
Yes, that's the path that goes, it's the decomposed granite path, the natural looking path that goes the perimeter of the park.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Maldonado.
Not a question, just, uh, I just want to thank again the ad hoc committee that came up with this and, and how we're putting this into fluidity, it's awesome. And then my other chair, uh, councilmember Pucciolato for, uh, making this a thing, so, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Not seeing any, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve a cooperative use contract with Affinity Material Solution LLC to complete the Memorial Park roads project and the enhancements to the Heritage Park walking path system, and the amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents.
Have a motion?
A second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, thank you, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Item ten D, discussion approval, disapproval, addendum number one, task order number one with Wildan Engineering to continue to provide plan review services for an additional one-year period, and amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, not seeing any, pretty straightforward, um, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve amendment number one of task order number one with Wilden Engineering to continue to provide plan review services for an additional one-year period, and amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much.
Item ten E, discussion approval, disapproval, enter into a five-year agreement with Five Twenty Events LLC to provide stage sound lighting equipment and services for Freedom Fest events, at a cost not to exceed fifty-eight thousand six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents. Is there any questions for Mr. King on this one?
This is just a, an update to a current contract, and it's in our budget, as I've found out that it's all part of the services, already in our budgets, right?
This is a, a new contract, but it is in our budget annually, yes. And Mayor, I do have, uh, the applicant on Zoom right now, if we do have any questions for the applicant as well.
Okay, very good, any other, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for doing this, we have this, uh, celebration every single year, and this just makes so much sense to do a five-year contract. I know, uh, Five Twenty Events has been out there already with their calendar into twenty twenty-six, and this is really excellent, thank you.
Anyone else, Councilmember Maldonado?
Yeah, thank you for, for doing this, this, this gives us a way to kind of forecast stuff, and, and what Keith in Five Twenty's doing is great, um, but Keith, you might want to check to see what your, um, Microsoft Word you're, you're putting out, because I guess some of the stuff was jarbled in there in the contract, so he might want to check his, his, um, whenever he's sending stuff to us, make sure that he's using the, I guess, the right, the, the right, um, version, PDF version.
Anyone else? Alright, and I too would like to say thank you, uh, they do a good service to us, and the five-year contract is, is welcome. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve entering into a five-year agreement with Five Twenty Events LLC to provide stage sound and lighting equipment and services for the Freedom Fest events, at a cost not to exceed fifty-eight thousand six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor, look forward to the show.
Item number eleven, our legislative update, I understand we've, uh, the legislature's been on, on recess, so we have nothing tonight. Moving on to, uh, item twelve, the town manager's report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman is happy to report that our new chief of police has started effective yesterday. Uh, he will be formally introduced to council on June third. Into my report, sir.
We are happy to hear that as well. Thank you very much, any questions for the town manager? Seeing none, is, uh, item thirteen, our second call to the public, anyone in the house or online would like to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to call, uh, close the call, second call to the public. Item fourteen, call to council, councilmember Bedford.
Good evening, everyone. I first would talk about the Mother's Day sweet surprises. I enjoyed that with, um, Anna from AKA Bakery. We went around to three schools and gave five children five children a cake, some flowers, and a nice card to their parents, and to see those kids' eyes light up was really, really special. The staff barbecuing grill at Heritage Park, I enjoyed that. I enjoyed Town Manager Wall singing, Summer, Summertime, and also AJ, and then Paul, out of nowhere, came out and started dancing, I really enjoyed that, and I wind up dancing with some of the staff as well. So kudos to you, Town Manager, for really doing a great job for the staff, and showing them how you care about them. And matter of fact, a couple of staff members said that they would take that any day, they didn't care how far, like for instance, their job, they said, "I will travel 20 miles or 30 miles to come to Florence," on how they treat us as far as staff, so we're a family, so kudos to you. Lisa Garcia for the IIIMC, thank you for representing our Town of Florence, and putting our, putting us on the map. Lastly, the shredding and safety day, I really enjoyed that, the kids enjoyed, and we wind up shredding over three tons of paper, so that was excellent. So Sergeant Mike Williams, thank you for putting that together, and parents love the, giving out the car seats, and officers actually showing them how to put it, put them in correctly. So give my hats off to you all, and staff, y'all are dynamite, keep up the good work so we can have something else, okay? Bye-bye.
Thank you, Councilmember Ben Sina.
Well, I was traveling last week, I was up in Utah, watching some grandkids play soccer in the cold, I would have liked to see Paul dance in the warmth and everything, so, but I saw the photos, a little like a great event, I wish I could have been there, and then I saw the photos for the shredding event, and it was more than a shredding event, it was really an awesome thing, and hopefully next year I will get that on my calendar, and I'll be here to attend those. I do want to say that I was out, but last week was National Police Week, so hats off to our police officers for what they do for us every day, and we thank them for their service to the Town of Florence, so with that, I have nothing else.
Thank you, Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, if anybody didn't know, it's Military Appreciation Month, so if you see a service member out there, thank them for their service, ask them how they're doing, just be cordial with them, see, you know, what they're doing, and, you know, how they like the military. And if you have kids, and they're thinking about military, just put them in contact with that person, and see if it's something that they might want to do in the future, so. Second thing is, this coming Monday is Memorial Day, the American Legion in town is going to be having a ceremony, a Memorial Day event at the Florence Cemetery at 0700, and then I encourage some of the council members that they're able to make it, it's greatly appreciated. And then afterwards, we're going to be having breakfast at the old Magic Ranch Golf Course, which is American Legion Post 97 on Hut Highway, the public's encouraged to attend if they'd I was able to attend the Mother's Day event at the Coolidge Florence Elks, it was a great event, got to speak to some constituents while I was there, and thanked some of their mothers for what they, what they do, it's a job I couldn't do, but thank you for all, everything mothers do out there, including my own. Knights of Columbus, I got to meet with Knights of Columbus a couple of nights ago, two weeks ago, actually, and I got to talk to some of the folks there, and I got to meet a couple of our past mayors, I never knew who they were, so it was pretty neat seeing how some of the folks that were once sitting up here are now out there, you know, still doing good things in the community, so that kind of is really encouraging. So I encourage folks, do something, give back, it makes you feel better about yourself, and you get to meet other people, so. And I'm trying to get in touch with all the different organizations, the 501Cs, to try to see how we can work together. And one of the things that some of the other past council members are trying to do was, how can we work together to not just have a, make a difference day just once a year? How can we just do this on our own, as far as different organizations, on helping folks when they need it? And lastly, thank you, Mayor, for meeting today, and Town Manager Bruce, with the Army National Guard. One of the things that I've been wanting to do is try to build a bridge with the Army National Guard, and see what they're doing out there, and what, so they can see what we're doing here, so it was pretty nice meeting with their officer out there today in our conference room, and talk about some of the, some of the things we can do, and how we can work together for the betterment of the National Guard base and for Florence, so thank you for that, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Neal.
Just have the Florence Track Team go in the state, had several athletes compete, nobody brought home a state championship, but I would like to give a big shout-out to Remy White, she's ran the 100, that was my race, 100 and 200, but she ran the 100, and she placed fourth in state, which is good enough for a medal. Also, it's very important to be noted that she is a sophomore, so we'll be expecting big things from her in the future for Florence, go Gophers.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So I have a couple of things, last week, I had the honor of filling in for a mayor at the National Junior Honor Society Graduation of the Eighth Grade, and I want to tell you, this bunch of young people will knock you out, their commitment, they had to maintain a 3.5 grade average, they needed to do community service work, they worked on projects, they were absolutely fabulous, but I also especially want to give a shout-out to our own David Lewis, who was with our Recreation Department, and we were so lucky that he went on to become a teacher and stay in Florence, and he is their mentor right now, and it was just a terrific, terrific event. Couple of things, on the shredder event, there is also an officer there, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten his name, but I want to call out to all the parents, the police department offers the service for all of you to bring your children in and have them fingerprinted, and they recommend you pull out just one strand of hair and put it into this folder that they give you, you put down all the pertinent information about your child, so gosh forbid, if anything ever happens, and the police come and they want to help you, of course, the mom's going to be hysterical, you just hand them this, and they have everything they know to go out and find that child. I'm very happy to say that we don't have any reports of missing children, but what if there was an accident, right, and your child needed to be identified quickly? So it's just a great service, you can just call the non-emergency number and go and have that done for your children. I was at the Arizona Preservation Conference last week, and it was a terrific conference, I know our staff attended, all three, Kevin Wall was there, Marcella and Andrew, so they will be coming back with a report on that another day. I wanted to say, last night was the last night of the Leadership Academy, and our Ian ran that just really well, it was an opportunity for everyone to get to know our 501(c)(3)'s, and what they do, and who they are, so that whole academy was just top-notch, and hats off to Lisa for putting that together for us. And lastly, we have our coffees tomorrow, the mayor has one, I have one, I want to thank the people that are coming in, and just reiterate again, there, we have no agenda, okay, so it's very informal, you can just come, and you can talk to us about anything that's on your mind about town business, so thank you.
Thank you. For me, I was traveling the last couple of weeks, thank you, Vice Mayor, for holding down the fort and to council. Tomorrow, coffee for me is at the Dorothy Nolan Senior Center, again, biscuits and gravy. Other than that, just a few meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks, so that's all I have. So with that, we are moving into executive session, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, or into executive session.
I make a motion we adjourn it to executive session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good, thank you.